Go ahead and call the meeting order. First item this evening is review and approval of the meeting minutes from the last meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections, if you'd be kind enough to talk about the meeting, as opposed to a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Just a quick note on items three and four, these are both public hearings. Next item this evening preliminary plat for Casey's general store.
Right, so Casey's has been here before, and so you have seen their general development plan, you did have an opportunity to make comments on that. I did hand out at Duane's request a copy of the conditional use permit that the council approved for them, so you'll see the conditions on there. And then I did put in front of you the updated site plan to reflect the comments in the conditional use permit resolution. In addition, John has received comments from both city staff and the city engineers, there'll be a couple additional tweaks. But for all intents and purposes, the general development plan and the street plat investigation has taken place in two previous, at your two previous meetings. So Casey's is here now with their preliminary plats for the general store. And I think John has one comment he wants to share with you, and then you could ask him any questions that you would have.
Yeah, the one item that is going to be revised on the plat, on the east side of the lot, they're currently noted of a five-foot sidewalk easement that actually will be a five-foot utility easement, being that the sidewalk is already there, just so you have enough room to get utilities in the future along that side.
Do you have any questions for John? Okay, thanks, John.
With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has any thoughts they'd like to share, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please. If there are no comments, I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Seems like everything is in accordance with what we've discussed through the conditional use permit process. And addressing the driveway on the south side, looking at the recommendations from the engineer, seeing that any further movement to the east of that driveway would be in conflict with Mindat's recommendations, I think it's important to note that it likely has to stay where it is. Maintain safety.
Are you looking for a motion for us to approve?
Yep, yep, or to recommend it, because that would be counted.
Of course. That said, I will be looking for a motion to make a recommendation.
So moved. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Preliminary plats. To take a formality, I assume I've got to go through this process again?
Yes, you do.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the final plat for Casey's general store.
I don't have any additional comments other than to point out that we're going to, this is going to come up when we talk about Carlton later, is that the lot that's on that block that's not included in this plat will, will have the Casey's edition platted, and that lot will be in a separate plat, and combining those lots in the future will not be as simple as going to the council. Just so we're basically clear, because they will be in two separate plats.
With that said, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing for the final plat for Casey's general store. As before, if you have any thoughts or comments, if you'd come up to the podium and share with your name and address, please. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat with the noted change of the five-foot utility easement, as noted.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, John. We'll take it to the council on Wednesday, then the resolutions for approval. Okay?
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, a public hearing for the revocation of a conditional use permit from Mr. Jason Wilker.
Right, so I think, you know, as you all know, over quite a few months' time, it's become apparent that some of the conditions of the conditional use permit were not being met. Mr. Wilker did receive a letter. All of the conditions of the conditional use permit are not currently being met. So we've scheduled a public hearing for you to take public comment, to take public comment.
With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has any thoughts they'd like to share on the conditional use permit revocation, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium, share their name and address, please.
My name is Troy Andrews. I live at 64739 270th Avenue. My former address is 202 Eighth Avenue Northwest in Casimir. I'm a, I'm a former resident of this town, was really frustrated with this town, to the point that I did sell my house and move because of this town. I was, I had a business that I ran, we did business in this town. I spent a lot of money in this town, at NAPA, hardware stores, different places, and this town treated my business like crap, like total crap. There was another hauler hauling in this town who you guys let, or not you guys, who the city administrator and the city council at that time, including the mayor who I talked to, let this guy go on without being licensed, but they sure took my five or eight hundred dollars or whatever it was that year. You know, you guys had laws on the books, you know, as far as how, how stuff was supposed to be operated, we did our best to follow it, and there was haulers that were not doing this, and you guys did nothing to stop it. My business was attacked by people, or by another business in this town going door-to-door, telling people that we sold out, went to my banker's house, I mean, caused all kinds of problems. And you guys had rules in your, in your ordinances on door-to-door salesmen, they weren't allowed to do that stuff, but you guys just turned a blind eye, you know? As just so much that has happened in this town, that I didn't do business in this town for about a year and a half, didn't spend any money in this town. And, I mean, I canceled my LP account with Greenway, I didn't go to the hardware store, just because of stuff like this. You know, and I think you should be working with Jason, I mean, there's two sides to this story, and I know it's not, you know, but I really question Carson's motives here. I mean, it's just, you pick and choose when you're going to enforce laws, and I think it's a bunch of, bunch of crap, really, you know? And I just, I'm just so frustrated with this thing. I just wish you'd give him a chance, and if the guys do pull his conditional use permit, I, I'm done spending any money in this town, that'll be the last, last nail, so, thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Maugh. I live at 502 First Avenue Northeast, Casimir, and I support Jason Wilker, and I support what he has tried to do to alleviate the conditional use permit. As far as I'm aware, he's been trying to comply with all of the actions, so, or the spinacraft request of him, and so I just want to let you know I do support him, and he's a big business in Casimir, so, it's a business that we need in Casimir. Thank you.
I'm Gary Snapp, 15 North 16th Avenue, Arches. And I've known Jason since preschool, and he's always been a hard-working kid. He's put tons and tons of hours and work into the business, and, like, it's been stated before, there's two sides to everything, and I realize that, but I don't think he's been given a fair shot. He's worked hard, he could have had his business elsewhere, chose here, and I think the motivation here is money for the city. You want to develop that area, you have to put a road through, that's my guess, I don't know for sure, but...
You'll have to forgive me a little bit.
Okay. That's just my belief, you know, what I think is going to happen, because I don't see any other reason to force him out. And I, I work for him, and I don't know what provisions have not been met on that condition that have been brought up today. Could I hear what those provisions are that he hasn't met?
Oh, the public package is right here. We have an opportunity to give it.
Anybody do a shortcut here, a few items? Eight items?
Yep.
Building permit was declined. Trees have been planted. And buffer along the west side of the property, city itself saw dirt in there to make a berm.
The city didn't help.
Where did the dirt come from?
It came from a local contractor.
Okay, local contractor, yeah, okay. And number five, no overnight storage of equipment outside. If we had a bigger building, that wouldn't happen. Orders of operations 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, that's what I heard. Outside storage and display of landscaping materials should not be allowed north of the existing structure. That's an impossibility. Had that much inventory, you've got to store it somewhere. And I've been hired by Jason to keep the lot clean, to keep the premises mowed, keep the weeds down, make it look nice for the neighbors, so... Yeah, that's just some of this is just, it's a catch-22. We need the building to put stuff in it, if you won't let us proceed with something like that, we can't comply to a few of these things, so... And I believe you need a fair shot to make this business go. That's all I have to say just.
I'm Wendell Englested. I'm a Jason property owner to the north of Jason's property. I live in Owatonna, and I had worked here as a county assessor until about five and a half years ago. From my perspective, Jason's been a good neighbor, he's kind of watched out for our property, watching the people that enter when they weren't supposed to. We're kind of subjected to a lot of the same rules and regulations, although he's in the city and Englested Properties, 40 acres, is not in the city. As I understand it, the county would prefer to have commercial property across from their landfill, which would be our property and Jason's further remaining empty lots here, at least the first lot along the frontage. And so, in my respect, Jason's in compliance with what the county desires, and that kind of fits what we, as owners of the other property, have to look forward to also, so looking more like a commercial, ultimate highest of issues for that property. I'm not, I haven't seen the plat, but I would assume that that proposed street that would be going through would cut through both of our properties, so, again, we're kind of subjected to the same rules as we go forward. So I am very much in favor of working with Jason, either renegotiating the conditional use permit or whatever, so he can be in the business as he has been, and be a member of the community as he has been. Thank you.
I'm Marty, 63797 250th Avenue. I have the property to the east of Mr. Wilker's shop, and I guess I would, I've never had a problem with Jason there, I've never had anything to complain about. My one concern would be is if, if his legs are taken out from underneath him and he can no longer operate there. It's always been my, my view is that a property that has an active business on it is kept up a lot better than a property that doesn't have an active business on it. So I'd just like to see something worked out between the two sides. I also agree, there's two sides to this story, but I'd like to see something worked out. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Skeever. I live at 25145 750th Street, Hayfield. I've known Jason for over 30 years. I was around there helping him when he started his business at 19, 20 years old. He's worked his fingers to the bone for his business, and he chose to base his business in Casimir. I believe a good business, a small businesses you have in your town makes your town stronger, brings more business to your town, and people who come to his business would be spending money at your gas station, spending money at your hardware store, your NAPA, you know, to drive a good business out simply because you want the land for whatever reason you may want it, I don't know what that is, I'm sure you have reasons, but that doesn't really seem fair to the small businessman who's worked all his life trying to build something if you were to just simply pull a rug out from under him and he loses everything he's worked for for the last 20 years. It doesn't really seem right. Jason's a very hardworking guy, he is a very well-liked guy, he's been doing business for so many years, and, and the reason so much is to like him is he always does fair business. He treats people like you'd want to be treated, he doesn't overcharge people, he doesn't rip people off, and hard work like that should be rewarded, not penalized.
My name is Matthew Vog. I live at 101 and a half West Main Street. I am past employee of Jason and current part-time. I've known him only probably, I'd say, 10 months, but one thing that I have known coming from a farming background is that people are what they're worth in work, and I know that he works hard. I'm a tough individual and I can run with him, but the fact that I, this city, just as long as I've been here, I currently work for another business but picking up their roots and moving elsewhere because of zoning problems. That isn't exactly have to do with the situation, but it just goes to show that what this city values as important long-term doesn't seem to be as prioritized as maybe it should be. Small businesses are what people like because they feel they're getting a fair shake at doing business right. Jason's a hardworking individual, I'll stand by him true and true, I just think that he needs an opportunity, and that he needs to grow, and he currently can't, because there's a curtain in front of him that's stopping him from going somewhere, and I don't need to tell you what it is because you all know. So I stand by him 100% and ask it to reconsider some of your decisions in helping him move forward in the future. Thank you.
Tim at Casimir Auto Repair in 19 North Manorville. I've known Jason and his father since passed away for, going back to the early 90s. When his dad owned his business in Rochester, and I don't know the trilogy of how Jason came to come over here, but he could have chosen Byron, which is where he lives, and it's wonderful that he's here. It's getting hard enough having, having a small business just to exist anymore, so I don't know the nuts and bolts of everything going on out there, but whatever you have to do to make it work needs to happen. You know, if he needs more room or a new building or do whatever, I, you know, if it's not right for that area, I don't know, but it just, we need to keep people here in town instead of, you know, sending them elsewhere. I'd like to be out here, but we can't seem to get that done out here as well, so whatever you need to do to help Jason prosper, I think, and I don't know the background of that building out there, but when I go by there, it seems to look, maybe it's not better in your eyes, but it, he does improvements as he goes, and he still works, he still gets the job done, but it's looking better than from when that building existed before. I think it was a garbage place or something before, I don't know who it was, but he is steadily making progress, so whatever you need to do to help him make more progress or build something new or keep things under wraps out there, if that's what he wants to do, then, you know, let's get it done, or whatever, building or space or anything to put stuff away is going to look better than it does, so, anything you guys could do and or people can do would be wonderful, and don't send him back in somewhere else, because he was nice enough to come over here, and his father owned a business in Rochester. He could have stayed over there, he could have stayed over in Olmsted County, but he chose Casimir, so let's keep him here, so appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Julie Nagorski. I'm Jason Wilker's attorney. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to defend Mr. Wilker. We've heard a lot of testimony from a lot of different people in the public. The facts are that Mr. Wilker started in business in April of 1999. He's been in business for almost 20 years now. He first came to Casimir in 2009, and at the time, he rented the space where he is now, that property. When he started renting it, the lot was full of four-foot weeds, semis that people had parked, abandoned equipment, it was an absolute mess. Mr. Wilker took it over and cleaned it up. Ultimately, the city granted the CUP in 2010, and Mr. Wilker then bought the property because of the CUP. He has improved it steadily year after year since that time. There has been some testimony with respect to the challenges that small business owners face. Mr. Wilker is no different. He does not have an abundance of cash with which to invest in the property. What he does is, when he has funds and is able to use those to invest in the property, he does that, and over the course of the almost 10 years he's been there now, he's put $10,000 into those bunkers and about $30,000 into berms and trees. At the time that 2010 CUP was granted, he was operating a business that did primarily retaining wells and pavers, and the landscaping was on the side. Since that time, he does retaining wells, landscaping, and nursery, all three. The CUP does not require that a certain percentage of his business be devoted to one or the other. It says "and." He does operate a landscaping and a nursery business there, and, and so he is complying with the CUP. Mr. Wilker currently employs 13 people. Most of those people are local citizens here or within the county. His customers come from all over Dodge County. His customers know the location, and they know Mr. Wilker because of the location, and he generates profits and assists people within the community because of that business location, the location, it's the business and the location. One of his largest tree customers is the city of Casimir. I have with me here today invoices for the last several years showing that the city has purchased 10 red royal trees in 2018, one snow tree, all kinds of trees that the city has purchased. I'd like those entered into the record if I could.
Actually, this is not. This is just a public hearing, and those invoices are currently public record. That would be considered public data, and anyone could come to City Hall and request copies of those invoices.
Okay.
Okay. There is no record, none, there are.
Okay. Mr. Wilker has also purchased in the last few years hundreds and hundreds of trees. And those trees he is putting to good use on the property and selling to the city. Very recently, he ordered 40 more trees for the west side of the property, and those are still at the property waiting to be put in. The evidence before the city tonight, in the form of the packet, which I would like to have the invoices to supplement, is dated. The photos in the, in that packet do not show the dates on which they were taken, and that's vital. Mr. Wilker has obtained just tonight photos that were taken by a drone, and they show the substantial trees and landscaping that has been added to the property, including 25-foot trees here that were put in 2010 or 2011, 25-foot trees that were put here in 2010 or 11 when the CUP was first granted, shrubs and crab apple trees all along here, and this berm that was added just this summer with the 40-foot trees that are going to go there, and then 320 trees that are planted in this area. The 320 trees that are planted are newer because he had planted... The three hundred and twenty trees that are planted are newer because he had planted trees back there and a farmer accidentally mowed those down when haying that area. So, you know, he, he is investing in the property. It looks as though the city believes Mr. Wilker is violating the CUP on eight fronts. I'd like to briefly address each of those eight. The first is, no additional commercial structures will be allowed on the property. That is subject to some litigation and a court decision as to whether or not his addition to his structure is consistent with the CUP. Second is, at a minimum sixty percent of the entire lot be planted and maintained in trees, shrubs, or other plants in a density certified as appropriate by the city forester. If you look through your packet, you'll notice that something is missing, and that is the certification by the city forester. There is no city forester that has ever communicated to Mr. Wilker with respect to the density of shrubs, trees, and other plants that are required on his property. Beyond that, it's compliant. It's not gravel, it's not an open pit, it's grass, trees, and shrubs. Third, applicants shall install and maintain a buffer along the south and west sides of the property prior to commencing operations. There is a buffer on the south side, it's trees. And there is a buffer on the north side, it's trees. There's also burmings. On the west side of the property, there's a fence. The fence has been there since, Mr. Wilker believes, before he started operating there in two thousand and nine, and it's his understanding that the fence is a buffer. If it is not, he would like direction from the city, perhaps the city forester, as to what would be a sufficient buffer for the city. The fourth condition that the city alleges Mr. Wilker is violating is that, with respect to additional lighting, Mr. Wilker has not changed the lighting on the property since he's operated there. Outside storage is not permitted, and that is why Mr. Wilker is seeking to expand on his structure. Six hours of operation shall be limited from seven to nine. You've heard from multiple people and perhaps more, and I haven't heard anyone state that there is a violation of that condition. Seventh was, outside storage is not allowed other than north of the existing structure. There are bunkers on the property, those were put in in twenty-ten with the consent of the city, and as I said, Mr. Wilker spent about ten thousand dollars putting those bunkers in. The neighbors actually appreciate them because they, they put the materials below the level of the eye line. And eighth, the final one, is, the operator must have a valid nursery license prior to beginning operations. There, we ask that you look at the actual language in the CUP. It says, "He must have a valid nursery license prior to beginning operations." He did have that valid nursery license, and he does have one now. The city indicates there have been some gaps in that, but the CUP did not require that he maintain the nursery license throughout the time that he exists there. And to the extent that he needs a license for what he's operating, he does go out and obtain that license. If the city does revoke his CUP, it will force Mr. Wilker to shut his business down. He will lose customers, they will drive farther, they will have to go perhaps outside of the county to get landscape rock and other items. Mr. Wilker will lose his substantial investment in that property. There has been some questions tonight with respect to motives and why the city has decided that it wants to shut down Mr. Wilker. We believe that the motive is the comp plan adopted in June of twenty-eighteen. Here's Mr. Wilker's property. It's slated for medium-density residential, right there. It's currently not medium-density residential, obviously. If the city wanted to become medium-density residential, it has a couple of options. One is buy the property from Mr. Wilker. And two is negotiate with Mr. Wilker. You don't revoke his CUP because you have a Christmas wish list of medium-density residential where a small business has operated for ten years. We ask that you not revoke the CUP. Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lyle Smith. I live at eight zero three Tenth Street Northwest. My backyard, our backyard, my wife's roof, bucks right up against Mr. Wilker. Now, I don't know what's going on here, but we've been there since Mother's Day weekend. We moved in there then. I do not have anything against his equipment, where he's got it stored, because I'm a farm boy. I lived north of Byron out in the valley by Oakville Park almost all my life. Now, if you're trying to, to me, if you're trying to take his property away, that's not right. If you're trying to ask him to do something different, that's okay. But in my estimation, you folks have got to give him time to get this done. And far as storage of his equipment outside, that don't bother me a bit. Like I said, I'm from a farm. All of our equipment was stored outside for many years. Nobody ever complained about it. And I'm not going to complain against Mr. Wilker. And like some of these guys said, I've known him since he would knee-high to a grasshopper. He actually graduated from high school with our young son. Now, that don't mean anything here, but I can't agree with him having to shut down and move his business. Like I said, it doesn't bother us a bit. And the trees, I wondered what the heck they were, but I found out it's not crabapple trees. But if you shut him down, and indication from the young lady over there next to the wall, if you're going to a city residence in that area, if you want to do that, I, I can't see shutting him down for that. And if you're trying to say too, that you're going to put a street right back to my house for that area and take part of my property, no, that's not right. Not right at all. Even though I just moved in. And we talked about moving many years, and we chose Casson. I did. It wasn't hard with me. Well, okay, here we are. But, like I said, I can't agree with some of the things you want to do. But I'm not on the council, and therefore I don't want to be. And another thing that pertains to all you folks, the only one I heard up here at this thing right here was that lady over there. And I got ear gumdrops in my ears, I got them turned up as high as I can, I couldn't hear you at all. You have to, if I may ask, then please, use those microphones if they're turned on. I couldn't hear you to say hardly anything. And I think you're the chairman, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, probably you've heard enough from me, but still, I, I just don't think it's right to make him exit the city. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else they'd like to add?
Okay. I've known Jason for a long time. We've worked together, when I was at Swinkie Companies, we worked together. I've, I've known him for a long time. We've talked together, back and forth. We are not here to drive him out. We are not here to impose anything more than we would anybody else. So you can forget all that rhetoric, that's not true. It isn't proposed to get a street through there. The comp plan is just a general guide. If he's still in business, the street will go around him. It, it's not set in stone. Okay? So, forget about all that rhetoric. That's junk, garbage. Jason, he agreed to this conditional use permit in twenty-ten, and he come to us and City Council and said he had met all points of his conditional use permit. That's why he was asking for this other conditional use to add onto the building. We asked him straight out if he did. At that time, he did not have sixty percent of his lot planted in trees. He did still store stuff on the south side of the building, it's still there. He agreed to this conditional use permit, and it states nothing is supposed to be stored on the south side. So you see, for us, he wasn't meeting his points. That's all it was. I don't want to see him go. I want to see him work with us. But when he come and asked for that building permit for that addition, I asked him straight out, and Jason, you can't deny this, I said, "Can you blanket it or put straw on it until we get this worked out?" And you turned around two weeks later and started digging. All those points just load right up. I'm willing to work with you yet. I'd still like to talk everybody into having you meet these conditional use permits, and then come and ask for a new permit to add your building to. I have no issue with that, but you need to stay with the program. You need to stay with what's planned and follow through. That's just my point of view. That's all there is to it. And we've talked about this, Jason. So don't, don't think that we're trying to run him out, because we're not. We're trying to work with him, but he needs to follow through. My point.
If there's no additional comments, I will go ahead and close the...
I do. I got one.
Again, my name is Matthew. I was an investigating officer in the United States Army for seven years. I've done two tours, and I come back to here. I can read people. I'm good at it. Whether you want to believe me or you don't, it's entirely on you. You're not an honest individual. You give off body language, it just totally makes me sick. Perfect. I understand that this is a city that wants to grow. It doesn't sound like you want to grow. It sounds like you want to nitpick fine details. I get it. That's a conditional use permit. That's just like a law. A law is a law, and it applies to everyone. I get it. Fine. He needs to recondition whatever he needs to do to come back to this city and see this. I don't buy it. I just don't. And as you look at me square in the face, you can understand how serious I am about it. I don't believe a word that comes out of your mouth. I respect you, especially as an authority figure, but I don't believe you. So when you tell us to forget some of these details, it's kind of hard, because you can't strip things from the record that have already been spoken. I apologize for blowing up. It just sounds great to me.
Sorry to get a little wound up here, but, you know, being a business, when you got like the, I'm going to use a county for example. I was kind of in the same situation Jason Wilker is in. You know, you, you start your business, you do try to follow the CUP domesticant. Your business grows a little bit, now you're boxed in. You're doing your best to go work, especially during the summertime, you're busier than busy, trying to keep all the customers happy, keep the government happy, keep your wife happy, keep everyone happy. And it, it, it's, it is the toughest thing. It's not all lake homes and Cadillacs when you're a small business owner, and that's, that's the truth. And I kind of went through the same thing, and all I left was my lawyer at that time, going through Dodge County. And I was getting to run around, I'd get my new CUP, because the state of Minnesota changed the rules on what regulated my business, so they say I need this giant building put up, well, I got to put this building up, go through all the stuff, and going back and forth, kind of like this stuff here. We walked out of Dwayne Johnson's office that day, and she says, "You know what? No matter what you do, he doesn't want you to build your business there. He wants you to do business all in the county." And, you know, and it costs a lot of money, it can, eats up all your time, what little time you have to yourself when you're in business, and it gets eaten up by government stuff. And, you know, this town, I had to, my, for my employees, I had to do, turn in their names, driver's license numbers, everything about my drivers. So you guys could do background checks on my drivers. Well, how, how good of background checks did you guys do on your own police officers? You know, it's, it's pretty sad. And this, a competing business, when they sold here not too long ago, one of their drivers didn't even have a driver's license. Driving this truck around in the street, your, your police department knew that they were running a single-axle truck overweight, and your police department did nothing to do, take care of, beating the crap out of your streets. You know? So when you tell someone that they need to stay on top of something, you guys should look at the mirror, in the mirror. Because this city has not stayed up on top of anything. I see you guys got building permits coming up tonight. You know, I built the garage, cost me about fifty grand to build this garage on Eighth Avenue. And the reason I built this garage is because they raised Eighth Avenue. They took all the fall from the driveway there. My driveway was flat. There, they put a little, probably like a four or six-inch PVC pipe off the side of the driveway that was supposed to take the water away. Every time the wind blew, the water went right in the garage. I had to talk to the city, say, "Hey, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to tear my garage down, raise it up, build a new garage." I mean, that was my only fix. So guess what? You guys got money for my building permits, you know, just, you know, it, it cost me money for something that you guys did but didn't care about the public and their property. You know, then, the garage was being built, and the contractor was a crappy contractor, I would have never guessed it. And there was all this really shoddy work going on. I brought it up to your inspector. I actually called your inspectors from the city to come and look at it and pointed out all this stuff. "Well, we can't really get into the middle of this stuff." You know, I'm not asking you to get in the middle, I'm just asking, "Is this passable?" "Well, we, we really can't inspect workmanship." Well, workmanship is the biggest part of it. You can have the best materials in the world, but if it ain't... Well, guess what? I had to fire that contractor and got someone else in there. And when stuff was getting inspected, all the stuff that this contractor did had to be redone. Roof had to be tore off, sheeting on the roof. I pointed it out to your inspector at that time. New header over the door, siding had to come off. It cost me a lot of money to fix that garage. I, we had it fixed right, we had, we got a DS carb trail, a heat field, he did a fabulous job fixing it up to the point where I would sell it to a family member. You know, I mean, I... But anyway, that was the city, in my opinion, that left one of their citizens just totally out hanging. I went to the city, I thought of Scott McMillan's place across from the four-H building up here, I wanted to put a four or six-plex there. Came in here and talked to Mike. Mike's like, "No, that's only zoned for two, two-family dwelling." Well, I said, "I ain't going to invest all this money for two families. I'd like a minimum of four, maximum of six." "No, no." And I'm not dragging you into this, Koi, you had nothing to do with this, but he was dropping your name, saying, "Koi Burks, he won't follow this." I never did talk to you, so I mean, I'm not bagging on you, Koi. But, you know, and I'm just like, you know what? I, I don't feel like another battle. So this isn't, "You had nothing to do with this, I've never talked to you about this," but this is what Mike said. So I'm just, I scrapped that idea. Shortly after that, that old school project came up. Guys gave them zoning variances, and it was all easy-peasy, and Mike, he was right behind it pushing. So I'm the local guy here, willing to take my money and reinvest it back in this town, but it's not good enough for this town. But an out-of-town guy is perfectly fine, and I see that happening in this town a lot. You know, it's not just one little thing that made me stop spending my money in this town, it was a lot of stuff. And so, you know, I, I just really, when, when you guys say he's not pulling his weight, I can say the city of Casson has not pulled their weight at all. So, anyway, that's around that, and, yeah, I just, you guys better take a long, long, hard look at yourselves before you start judging this guy here.
If there's nothing else, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you all.
Would you like to start with this one?
Your only obligation tonight was to hold a public hearing. I would say call.
I would say call.
Were there, worthy of any further discussion?
Oh, thank you. Yep, thank you.
Well, I'll just make a couple comments. And one that I agree with what Lonnie was saying, that there is no unintended purposes other than to try to hold Mr. Wilker compliant with the conditional use permit that was outlined in two thousand and ten. He's had eight years to, to be in compliance, and he has not been compliant during this eight year period. Now, I've only been in this position for a year and a half now, or almost two years. And I don't know, during that course of six years prior to me coming, what communications has happened between Mr. Wilker and the city as to whether Mr. Wilker has come in and asked for an amendment to the conditional use permit to allow the bunkers and things to the south, to allow onsite storage of equipment, things like that. To my knowledge, none of that has taken place. So I, I just am feeling that Mr. Wilker is more than fifty percent responsible for not being compliant and not working with the city. I think the city is more than willing to work with him and to work with this, to look at amending the conditional use permit, or at least considering amending the conditional use permit that may be more in align with the way his business is today and where we see it going in the future. But the fact of the matter is, it's been eight years, and it doesn't appear, at least in all the correspondence I have, that there's been this ongoing dialogue to address the conditions of the conditional use permit. And so we're faced with enforcing it. And we're enforcing it only because we've received complaints regarding the property. That's what initiated this, was the complaint received by the city.
What was the complaint?
Jerry Bird.
Jerry Bird, your first letter? We're not addressing it because of that. I came in after.
They came in regarding this and the conditional use. That's what prompted this. So I, that's where I'm at. As planning and zoning, I'm willing to look at the conditional use permit and look at amending that to, to help Jason continue to grow his business. But you've got to meet us. Partway, or halfway at least. Come in, talk to us, see what you can do, what you can't do, see what, where the city is in their position, what they can and cannot do. Let's get this dialogue going, rather than this antagonism that appears to be, well, obviously is happening. I have nothing against Jason personally. I know him, I know of him, I know his family. So I have nothing against Jason personally. I just wish that he would have come in and had this ongoing dialogue.
I, I agree with the fact that, yeah, Jason's been in business his time, he agreed to the conditions, but I also don't feel that it's necessarily a hundred percent his fault for not necessarily staying up. I, I agree with Troy. Life gets in the way. We get busy with business, we get busy trying to keep things going. So I can understand some of the stuff and some of the conditions that aren't, that aren't being met. My concern more so with this, and, and I think it brings a bigger light for this board in the city of Catson, is the fact that there's no follow up. I realize that that's a daunting task, and we've talked about that, and in the past, we've talked about the only time that anything gets brought up on any of these CUPs that we do is if a complaint is filed. And I don't agree with that. I, it's, we put these things in place, and yes, the business owners agree to them, but it's our job, not the citizens of our community, to police that. And with that being said, I, I just, I don't, I don't agree with the fact that, that revoking his conditional use permit is the best thing to do. I would agree with Duane that, you know, whether it's, we look at where he's at today and what his business is, and, and if this needs to be adjusted, trying to adjust it in some way. I also know Jason, Jason's been a, a huge supporter of the fire department, which I am the fire chief of. He's allowed us to do many things out there on his property that are benefits to this city. And I think if that business goes away, that's a, that is a detriment to, to this city with some of the things that, that we do from, from that aspect. So from my perspective, some kind of communication and conversation has to be had in regards to where we sit today with this conditional use permit and what we can do in some kind of timeframe to get him back into compliance.
I agree with everyone saying, and what everyone has said. You know, this is a perfect example of how things can carry away. We haven't had anybody that's gone around and really made sure everything was compliant. This is the extent of what happens. Like, I don't want to see us revoke anybody's conditional use permit. Jason has worked hard out there. It's great that he's growing. I think that we would, we just need to get together and work on this, and you know, maybe in the future, we can find some way to go around and check on these things, make sure that there, everything is on the up and up, so we don't come to this. I'm sure Jason would want to work with us, but if we could all get together and then work on a few things to get this thing ready. I think it is a, a point that we can use in the future, so that we don't come to this point again. It really just hurts everybody.
What are the mechanisms available to revise the conditional use permits, the same process as before?
Can you hear me, sir? I'm sorry, I'm trying.
Yeah. Unfortunately, in this case, Mr. Wilker has hired an attorney. So that his attorney would need to communicate directly with the city attorney and order, or communication with the county.
Tom, was that what you were asking for, or is it actually the process of doing an amendment?
Is there a mechanism in place? Because at least in my memory over the last ten years, or whatever it's been, is that we've never actually had somebody come in and saying, hey, guys, I'm struggling to meet the use, the conditions set forth in my conditional use permit. Is there a mechanism, but if we can review these proceedings?
So you're not asking to talk to Jason quite yet, you're just asking about the mechanism of the order?
So Mr. Wilker was, yeah. Mr. Wilker was offered two opportunities, and actually two public hearings were scheduled in regard to the conditional use permit. And both times, his attorney requested that those hearings be canceled.
Why is that, Neil?
I, I don't know that's appropriate. I think we will allow his attorney to respond with our attorney. I'm sorry.
No, no.
I'm, I'm just trying to...
Do you mind if I...
No, no, no. Thank you.
That's the hard part here for me, is the communication. Even when I went around, just trying to figure out what was or wasn't going on, took a few photos, I believe the communication we got from his attorney was to the effect of reminding, at least me in that case, that I was trespassing. So it's, how do you start this dialogue? How do you have this conversation? And I guess, if we turned it into a legal matter...
It'd have to come with a legal matter?
It definitely handcuffs our ability to handle it. That would be my challenge.
Okay. Any comments, sir?
I've already made my comments. I still say, Jason, talk to your attorney. Have your attorney talk to our attorney. Let's get something going. I said, I'm willing to work with you. We just need to work with each other and be straight up. I think that's the next move. Get the attorneys to talk, let's meet, let's get this thing going. I said it from the start. But you got to work with us.
Coy?
Coy?
Fallon?
I don't have much to add on that, but just kind of re, what's already been said here tonight, and you know, where there can be some sort of communication or dialogue to find this pathway to compliance, it could be a good thing.
Well, I, I do agree a lot with Troy on this here, and there is certain things, being a small business, especially when you work in your business every day, you're the accountant, you're the bill collector, you're the bidder, you do all this stuff. You don't necessarily always remember what you did back in two thousand and eight, that you had a certain condition you couldn't afford a bunker in, because of the trucks that onsite. I don't know exactly how we let it get this far. I apologize if I did anything to let it get this far. It has gotten out of hand, and is, in my eyes, ridiculous that it's this far. There's, if there are certain things that need to be fixed because they're outside of a conditional use permit, or a variance or something, and it slipped through the cracks, I'm sure anyone who's come to this table tonight and drive around town and find something on somebody's property that has something that is not in compliance. But for this to get this far, for somebody who has a growing business in this community and hasn't had a legitimate complaint against his business, for the neighbors to say that there isn't a problem. I've been around the state quite a bit here this year with work and everything else, and the one thing about you find a nursery or landscape business, you find them in the residential areas. There's areas up in Eagan that have massive nurseries, landscape businesses in the residential area, where I follow the ones that have closed up and left are in the commercial districts. The residences are the ones who patronize these guys on the weekends, the nights, whatever else. Call me, set up appointments, had a guy come on, his number, set up an appointment after hours with him. So for this to go this far is beyond comprehension. But I agree with everyone else that we need to move forward and work with them on it a hundred percent. I mean, there's a couple things, the bunkers on the south side, like I said, I haven't heard a neighbor complain about them. If they've been good this long, I don't have a problem with them. And I'm not, if we're going to allow them to have them, I'm not going to make them dig them up to meet this conditional use permit. I, I asked if I could drive around out there. I do see that he has planted multiple trees out there on the west side. But yeah, we need, we need to open up a line of communication with them and get this process moving forward and create an amendment to his CUP, so he can expand in the future also. Thank you.
Who starts the conversation?
Hilton's attorney may contact the city attorney.
Any other conversation that needs to be had on the top of the agenda?
That's totally up to you.
Come ask me.
I'm good.
Put this one to bed for the time being, Neil?
No action necessary.
Right.
Next item on our agenda, general downtown plan.
Yeah, so I have a couple things to talk to you about. As we've been doing staff reviews of some of the plans that have come before us, we've been referring to the downtown plan, comprehensive plan. Initially, Casey's had submitted their O4 footprint with a flat roof. I did go back to them and asked them to consider our small town identity. They came back with the hip roof plan that was provided in your packet. And then in addition to that, they have also provided a canopy that would coordinate with the hip roof on the building by also having a shingle feature on the canopy as well. I did note, as I was driving through Spring Valley and Hayfield today, that they do have like an white beige option that they've been using on their buildings. So depending on your input on that, so here's what I'm asking. I'm asking, does the hip roof and this canopy feel to you like it means to your small town, the small town identity? And would you prefer beige over red? That's the answer.
Okay.
Because I, because I can only go so far with what is small town identity, so...
And just to confirm, there, there is no precedent here, there is no...
Right. You have a brand new comprehensive plan, it, it designates the area going out to fifty seven as, you know, expansion of your downtown district, so that when people get up at fourteen, it feels like they've arrived in Catson. Here we are. So if, if this facade and canopy feels to you like we're moving in the right direction, I would give them the go ahead, so that they can submit their building permit complications.
You always start with Duane. You, you have any...
I don't have a preference, white or red.
Okay.
Whatever they want. I think, as I envision small town design, I am envisioning something not modern, where you've got an entire glass front, flat roofs, things like that. I think this, in my opinion, meets the small town character with the hip design and the shingled roof and things like that. So as far as I'm concerned, it meets what we had intended it for the contractual plan. So I'm okay with it.
I would agree with that.
I agree. No issue on that. Yeah. No. I, I think that, you know, as some of this develops, it might be some of the materials that are used and they come into play, so they like, maybe there's a certain, like this is, I think this works, you know, has the stone and the brick, which are historic materials traditionally, but they, you know, the, you know, shingle roof. The only concern I would have is the, is, and this isn't in particular to the aesthetics, but I guess on the backside, where the rooftop units are, it's going to be visible to the neighbors on the backside, because those are going to be taller than the fence. So if there is a better way to screen those rooftop units on the backside...
And I will provide that comment.
Well, they should have basically the same conditions that Domino's has with their rooftop unit that isn't, I don't know, if it's been taken care of yet. They have to, supposed to supply, supply the fence around the three sides of Domino's to help kill the noise for the neighbors. I think that should be the same condition or consideration as that.
Okay. Okay, I will provide that comment. Casey, do you have something?
Let's just strike the historic comment. He's on a historic district.
Right, right, right.
Let's forget about that.
He was talking about materials. Just materials, that's all he said. That's all. Okay. Feel like we're, we're good to go?
Okay. You're comfortable.
So then, because the Carlson site plan review is also in your packet. During that site plan review, I did provide the staff comments referring to the comprehensive plan, which, let's see, says something about, on page like four, four dash twelve and four dash thirteen, parking should be located behind the buildings rather than between the front of buildings. be located behind the buildings rather than between the front of buildings on the street. I provided that comment. As you can see from Mr. Carlson's site plan, he is planning to have, he would like to have the parking in the front of the building. In which case, we also made a comment about connecting the building to the sidewalk. Thanks, Colin. So you can see the comments here. So we're acknowledging that he's providing a vegetative buffer. There would be a residence to the south of that parking lot. That he make a connection to the sidewalk, asking that he does execute the stormwater easement agreement before starting construction. And then, he does have two buildings on here, which he could obtain a condition use permit for a planned unit development. And David Martin has told me that this plan does meet the 15% green space requirement. And then, a note in the staff comments, we had asked that the two parcels be combined. They cannot because they're in two separate plats. So in the future, we'll wanna think about how we allow things to be plotted that exclude parcels in the same lot. But we're not there yet. So if this site plan and those notes are acceptable to the planning commission, then we will continue to work with Mr. Carlson on his next step.
What's the next step, Steve?
I think he'd like to have two buildings. Oh, David, yeah, go ahead.
So this isn't an addition, this is an actual separate building?
You know, I talked about doing an addition and I would like to do a separate building if possible. I realize I probably have to go through some zoning stuff, like David?
Not necessarily, but a conditional use.
A conditional use?
Yeah. Because, well, with the planned unit development, it allows some more flexibility as the zoning is laid out currently. We're only allowed one building.
Right.
So I guess if the planning commission would be amenable to, or agree, or if in your opinion, the planned unit development would permit the use of, permit two buildings, then we would be go, come forward next month to submit a conditional use application for planned unit development so we can have two proposed structures. As we've looked at, we can't, that second building can never be cut off because we would then violate all kinds of setbacks because we'll no longer be a corner.
I know we don't have an engineer here, but being there are two separate buildings, do they have to have two separate services?
I don't know that that's the strictly requirement. What was your plan for that, David?
I was proposing the service at the way I have it right now.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, because there's some difficulties with that, too, with the depths of the sewer main.
Yeah.
Out on 4th Street. And we're having trouble getting enough cover for the second building.
Right, right. And that was, I don't remember Brandon making that up.
No, he didn't bring that up.
Oh, yeah.
He just asked if we were gonna just go back or go to one building then to change the size of the service. Because essentially, it would be, it would have to be rental property. Both structures would be rental property because it has to be in the name of one owner, so.
Just asking.
And two, we're also coming tonight to get your take on us deviating from the comprehensive plan with our parking between the building and Manorville Avenue.
Right, right.
Not trying to argue with you, but to me...
No, that's the plan, right.
The parking, as it's shown, is more hometown to me than seeing the backside of a building. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, so it is your blessing on what's here, given that.
And then, I guess I'll talk about the drainage agreement. The drainage agreement with Shopko is not gonna work out.
Oh, it's not?
No. So we are going to have to go to Plan B and go with discharging our storm water to DOT's right-of-way, the existing storm sewer within Manorville Avenue.
So you'll work with them on that?
Yes, I did talk to Chris today.
Okay.
And it's just, we just have to see how things work out. We'll have to analyze the existing system within Manorville Avenue to make sure that it has sufficient capacity before I can tie, take it there. And if it doesn't, then I go to Plan C and take it to Maston Creek within DOT's right-of-way.
Oh, okay. So we would strike number three then, about, on my sheet?
With the agreement?
Number three is the agreement.
Yeah, I don't believe the agreement's gonna work out with Shopko.
Okay, thank you.
I got a couple of questions. I heard you talking earlier about colors and stuff. Does that reflect on me as well? Do I have the, is there like an architectural committee that, as far as on my siding color and my?
Actually, your building being like that profile pretty much fit perfectly. Really, your building, I don't have any question about your building profile at all.
But the colors?
No, no, like Dwayne wasn't concerned about which color.
We don't have anything set, so as of right now.
Yeah, yeah. It was just out there as a G, by the way, I saw it made.
We may set something in the future if we get multiple things, particularly as we address the self-manual avenue issues, but you may be well in place long before we get something like that.
Yeah. And I think, did I provide a picture of his building profile? Oh, I didn't. Well, I just have preliminary profiles, right, you know, from that very first sign we shot.
Yeah, elevation stuff, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But it's pretty much a one-story low-profile hip roof.
Hip roof, stone.
It's pretty much exactly what Casey's have, yeah, presented.
Then we're...
Yeah. Something like stone partway up and...
About four feet.
Yeah, yeah, very nice. Okay, we're, everybody's good? Do we know what we're doing? And then, Home Federal, I'm just bringing this to you because I wanna be clear about what we did with the amendment. So we did do an amendment to the final plan for that PUD, which pretty much changed the footprint of the building. They have come back and indicated that they would go, they may go two stories with that building. From what I read here, it's not my understanding that they need to come back if the footprint is the footprint that was approved in the amendment. So if anybody feels any different, let me know. Otherwise, we're gonna move forward with the building permit for two stories on the footprint that they submitted for the amendment. Just so we're all clear. I don't want it to, you know, somebody to come back later and say, gee, is that what we talked about? You're all, you're all good?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Great.
If that comes back in a few, I'll have to recuse myself because we're doing the design on that one.
Okay. Well, I don't think so because I think we'll just move to building permits.
Environmental trail corridor.
So this goes again to staff comments on the site plan review. So Mike Marty is planning to do some building on a lot in East, East Park?
East Creek.
East Creek, commercial park. And because of the trail map that's here, we did ask him for an environmental trail corridor. He asked me if that was gonna be a requirement of approval of his site plan, and I can't require that of him for his site plan. So I've come to you to say, do you want an environmental trail corridor along Maston Creek in that East Creek subdivision lot?
Three, I believe it is.
Yeah, lot three. So, so Maston Creek cuts across the north part of that and is actually not buildable.
Where?
Right.
Where the creek is?
Right.
Right, and you can't build on it.
Right. And the creek will actually act as a buffer because it is the open space between the building, the light industrial building and the residences behind it. So this is a question for the planning commission.
Which spot is it, Mike?
West of my shop.
The third one, and...
If you're at my shop, it's the next lot to the west.
Yep.
Right next to it.
Yeah, empty one, yeah. So as you may recall, we did end up with, we had asked for an environmental trail corridor in the Caswell addition. We ended up with a, an east trail easement. This would be south of that trail easement. There's potential that the city could pick up the property that includes the creek between the tracks and 34. So that would extend the trail. The city would have the ability to establish a trail corridor there. And then this would be another piece of the puzzle, so.
Is she on the north side of that creek?
Yeah, it's the north side of the property.
Right.
And it's...
South side of the creek.
Well, we're just asking for a corridor along the creek because the determination about where the trail will go through that.
You've got nothing through your property that your shop sits on right now, right? Is this basically?
Not right now, no.
And?
Not at this time.
We don't have any designated corridors south of the tracks.
Well, that's what I thought. I mean, it's like, you know, we had on the north side, so we were working.
Okay.
But nothing on that. That's why I was curious to see what happened on that, how far back is winning, if he's on the... Yeah. Nothing on that south side. I see what you're talking about with the corridor. He has the property right all the way along that. Just let me clarify the, your new lot that you're gonna build on, does that include the creek?
It does. It's, I have both sides of the creek, yep. It crosses the creek. Do you have that site plan there, boy? It shows the creek on the site plan. Up in the northwest corner.
I guess I don't see a reason to, I mean, we're gonna have a little piece here and a little piece there. I mean, it's to the point where if we're gonna put some sort of trailer, then we need to kinda get a plan of action at that point in time, go through and talk to the owners that have these lands. I mean, right now, we got trailed to nowhere already, you know? We can't get from here to there. So, I mean, I think if someone's gonna go and put some sort of trail corridor in there, it's gonna have to someone that head strongs this. And at that point in time, there's a snowball club going through and getting landowners from Cass and the Hayfields to go across their property for a snowball trail and headstrong at that point in time. And I mean, the creek you can't build in. I would assume that most owners down the road in the future, they might become a little bit better seller lot if they're, they agree to when the trail's gonna be proposed to actually connect from one another. They might at that point in time see the benefit at that, you know? I mean, Mike would probably say, there's nothing, I put a sign on the north end of his building, said Marty Leckerson, I'd like them to see that walking by there, riding the bike, you know? So I don't know why, right now, I don't see the point to just get little chunks here and there to, does nothing for us.
That especially, we really don't, I mean, kinda got an idea, it's pre-vague, you know? Is that something that we wanna throw into the mix at this point?
Let me ask this, like, do you wanna give that?
I would prefer not to. I bought the property without the corridor in it. So my intention was to build a building up there to lease, which that project has since fallen apart. But what I wanna do is build the pad up this year yet so that in the future, there's a pad site available to put a building on, hopefully soon. But, so I guess my preference would be to not have a trail there just because there hasn't been a trail there and I don't foresee anybody... I've lived there all my life and that trail, or that creek isn't exactly the most picturesque area to...
Clean up the rip.
That's my opinion.
Well, I live on the other side.
So that's all I have is my opinion. But I guess my preference would be since it's gonna be a commercial area there anyhow, it's not really suitable for trails.
Well, the trail is obviously why it connects the west end out to where Dwayne lives, you know, and bring something down through there so we can have a bike path system. Like I said, I don't think that that is in our near future and you may not own the property. You may be in retirement home down there a little by that time, you know?
We'll believe it.
So, right? So I just, I don't think that we need to worry about trying to get little pieces here and there to a trail.
Well, I think, I think you're exactly right. If you're gonna do a trail, you have to bring everybody in the same room and talk about it and try to figure it out at that point. But to get one piece of corridor now and then 20 years later, the piece next to it and down the road by then, everybody's forgot they even have it.
Right.
So I don't know how you do it that way.
Yeah, I think it's probably best to look at trail system in our urban expansion districts and build from the outside this way, you know? I think we can address what we have already in place by some artful markings on the existing streets to designate as bikeways to call that part of our trail system.
The good street, that creek alleyway over to the north. Say something like that, I guess.
That wouldn't be good.
Let's be blunt with Alan.
No comments, sir?
No.
Okay.
We're all comfortable saying none at this time?
Yep.
Okay.
Next item, expired building permits.
Yes, well, this maybe goes right to the point about, are we releasing conditional use permit? We're evidently not releasing building permits either because even though the property, the owner of the property who's applied for the building permit is getting a letter saying that their permit has expired, are we always getting one? We are always getting one? Oh, okay. I'm not always aware that we got one. So we do have open building permits with no final inspections who have received letters from CMS to say that their building permit has expired after 180 days, but we are not getting those final inspections. And there's a very good chance that those areas are being occupied without final inspection. So, so one, I recognize that we have an issue. I did ask if CMS could provide me with a list of the folks that they have mailed that letter to, and I did not hear back yet. So if you want to table those and hope you can get a better idea of the volume of those...
Are these livable building structures? Are they garages, sheds, decks?
Basements.
Yes.
Everything.
Windows, decks, I mean, what you need to get a building permit for.
Well, to go along with this, how many do we have out there that have been built without permission?
Yeah, well, I can't...
Same volume.
That I cannot help you with.
Nobody's ever did that.
That's one I maybe can. So, so it turns out that once we identify who has these expired building permits, we actually can charge them what... So, so it turns out that once we identify who has these expired building permits, we actually can charge them what the cost of their original permit was to reinstate their permit to finish the project or get the final inspection and the occupancy permit that they should have gotten. So in that case, you know, I'm just floating the idea if we offered folks an amnesty period and said, do this in the next sixty to ninety days and get your final inspection and we won't charge you anything. That might be something to consider, but I first would like to see what that volume is going to be. So I can bring this back to your next meeting with a better idea of what we're talking about.
Well, I don't know if the volume's going to matter. I mean, it's something we're letting slip through the cracks. I don't know if you've got a break-in point, three or three hundred, the volume's not going to matter.
Okay.
It's on us, so.
Okay.
But I would like to see our building permit application and the rules that go along with it if that would be possible so I know.
Actually, that would be in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's part of the building permit.
It's set, yeah, it's set out in here, yep. And then refers to state building codes. That's now what else to be available. And then, so then very specifically, there is a building project that was identified as being incomplete. I did include a letter and after I talked with the homeowner, you can see we made a few adjustments to the request. So this homeowner has, they have paid an amount equal to their original building permit. They're looking for more than sixty or ninety days to finish the project. Based on some of the verbiage in zoning ordinance, I just suggested that she go ahead and request a year because it's set a maximum of one year of extensions. And I said, just request it for the four hundred and thirty-three dollars instead of paying four thirty-three now and four thirty-three in six months and let's just get it done. And then also at the time that they have applied for the building permit, they had not taken into account in their site plan, a structure that was moved and is now outside of, well, sits on the other side of their six and a half foot setback so that it doesn't meet the setback. Plus, it wasn't moved in a way that fit any building permit regulation, but they need some extra time to get that building moved. That's the ninety-day extension to, to, to take care of their zoning issue in addition to taking care of their building permit.
Just not to check out, is that a garage?
I think it's a living space above a garage. Oh, the garage was moved. It's a garage that was moved, yeah.
I remember that.
Yeah.
That's what sits off the east side of the property?
Yeah. Yeah, so there was no.
What's the square footage on that?
Well, we did review that, we did review that. But see, here's the thing, so it's currently in violation of the zoning ordinance. So it's a zoning violation right now.
What's the violation, if I may ask?
That it's.
It's in, it's within the setback.
Right, but also.
It's not a permanent structure, it's part of there.
It's, it's been there for years.
Yeah, and that, that's over a hundred square feet, then it is a violation.
We did, yeah, we did review that with the property owner. So, but it also was moved without the impervious surface that it would need for its size and without a building permit or demolition permit for the relocation of it. So that's the specific request for ninety days. I had originally, you know, sent them the letter with the thirty-day notice that it was in violation. They're asking until, I think, November fourth if you would make a motion to extend their building permit and extend their time to address their zoning issue.
This is just a recommendation?
This is her request. This is the request of the property owner. If you would like to approve the property owner's request, then we'll, you know, we'll proceed in that timeframe and allow them the extra time to deal with both the building permit and the zoning issue.
Does the building permit extension, does that sit in our jurisdiction or is that in jurisdiction of the building commission?
That is in our ordinance. The building permit extension is in our ordinance. It's just not clear. It's like you can request a hundred and eighty days, but the maximum is one year. But an extension costs four hundred and thirty-three dollars. I did discuss it with the city attorney. She thought it was a reasonable cost to bring to the planning commission because it's a little vague about which is. So that's why we would have the planning commission's approval of the property owner's request.
Well, what I was trying to get at is we are just a recommending body. We just can recommend this to city council. They're the ones that have to make the decision on it. On some law, we've got to tip your ass and say thanks for at least saying something and communicating law.
And we're talking about, just to be clear, in my mind, we're talking about I N C hundred and eight? Are we talking about something different?
Eight C, eight C, yep, yep.
All right.
Do you have a?
And the request is on that.
Good.
They pay the fee. You're asking for an extension. I have no issue with it.
No, I have a problem with it. I make a motion to recommend the proven extension.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. The table say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Zoning ordinance proposal.
Yeah, so at your last planning commission meeting, you had a proposal from Poisington Cobra Group for fifteen thousand dollars for services this year to begin the process of reviewing the current zoning ordinance. The council did not approve contracting with Poisington Cobra Group for the fifteen thousand dollars. So, so Poisington Cobra Group has kind of revamped the proposal, underlining some items that would be handled by staff and the planning commission. And then which tasks that they would handle and I don't remember how much that was.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars, okay.
That takes eight thousand.
That takes eight thousand dollars. So, and that is on the city council's agenda for consideration on Wednesday.
Why was it turned down the first quarter? Too much work. Too much, so there's not a question about the quality of the work or the people?
Well, as far as the planning commission can do some of the labor, like we've always done in the past. Let us try it first before we do what we started. Dropping thousands of dollars. For a budget time.
Don't be charged more.
That's when your wage says, well, it already is here.
So this, this will go to council and for their consideration, I would say.
If it doesn't get acted on, we got the whole, whole, really have to do.
Bring your sleeping bags.
Well, I mean, it's one of these things, it's, it's stuff that you got to go through. And I don't know how often you guys look in the books outside on second Monday of the month. But there's things, I get quite a few people that call me on that just that when I start digging on it, it's, you know, some of these things are antiquated and muddy. You know, and you just got to bring it to the, our attention so you don't chit chat on it and find some better verbiage on it or get rid of it or whatever.
Things change too.
Yeah. Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's because of that, I would argue, it's all important to have the experts weigh in on the, somebody who deals with this, writing this kind of material day in and the day out.
Right, which I agree, but you also got to look at the dollar signs.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's double, figure out where that balances.
Right. And that's why I think that even the mayor said last time, it's like, instead of just dropping the cash, let's try to make a run at it, you know? And like I said, there's, there's things in there that I've been dealing with that, it's just, it's muddy and it doesn't, you know, it's, it goes nowhere, you know?
Right, and those are the kinds of things that you as a group will take an inventory of based on them.
The worst problem with any ordinance, two people read it, two people read it different ways. I don't care how you write it. It's inevitable.
I think it'd be good if they had more pictures and diagrams and pictures. Good idea.
There we go.
Other business, unless there's any more discussion? Other business, I should have brought it up. Is there some sort of mechanism that's going to remind us in 2019, Farnsworth's request is up and just to work that in the conversation?
Well, that will go, people go to CMS.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the mechanism would be that the letter would come back to us and say that it had expired.
And Colin has touched on a point a few times and I, I guess I'm a little fuzzy as to what topics do we need to recuse ourselves from as council people?
Um, generally, yes.
I've read what's, you know, in the ordinances and everything, but you talk about something that is grossly subject to interpretation.
For which of those financial gain? So, so Colin chooses to because his firm has the business.
Is it direct financial gain or is it indirect?
Direct. I've had a bunch of conversations with this being in self-employed in town here. And like you recusing yourself, you need to have a reason why you're recusing yourself. And the re, there's only really a reason for it would be direct financial gain. Like you, if you vote, which you're supposed to vote, you don't get direct financial gain out of this board here.
No, but he, but he's, he's employed by a firm that will be paid.
This is a recommending body. This is where I will talk to, to Zizinski quite extensively on this stuff. So if you were sitting on city council and you were going to have a yea or nay vote there, then you'd want to inform everybody of it. It's like no different than myself and Mike Marty said when he sat here, if you're going to bid on a project that's going in town, I can bid on it. I just have to let the community know that I'm bidding on it and that make sure that I'm not, or that the one situation was I was not the general bidding on it, I was a sub. Also, I wasn't in direct relationship with that whatever, so. But yeah, I mean, like here, in my viewpoint, if I said to someone, you should be able to vote here because it's your opinion as a recommending body. As a council, no.
So it's only direct, it's not indirect? I mean, a family member can benefit from it?
Right.
That most folks will choose, they're on the side of caution.
Okay.
Yeah. Most folks, they're on the side of caution.
Doug, I think I've seen dump trucks moving dirt with our street projects. Have you went through that process and said, hey?
Yeah, yeah. Not dirt, blacktop.
For you, I saw trucks.
I'm a subcontractor, nothing to do with the business process. I get paid the same amount per hour no matter where they're at.
So we really don't need to recuse ourselves from it?
Not really, not at this level.
Okay.
You just do it out of good faith and.
Right.
Right, or that your firm may prefer that you do.
And you could address it too, despite disclosing that you're an employee of the firm who's bidding on it. You've made that disclosure, that's all you would need to do.
Yep.
Good enough. That's all the other things I had. Is anybody else?
If you know you're going to be that employee, you know what job you're going to be on, what day, you know?
Any other new business? Go ahead and dream.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Awesome, anything?
Somebody got to tell Mark that. I'll walk to your door. I think the police want to present the door, I might be able to walk in.
I want that case to be addressed.
Just talk to the FBI, they already got it.
Yeah.
Tell you what, I mean, that's, that's pretty.